Coming up next, CityNet 30 takes you downtown for the weekly luncheon meeting of the City Club of Portland. Live weekly coverage of City Club is made possible in part by TCI and is produced through the facilities of Portland Cable Access. Now we join the City Club for this week's program.
Back and forth to the extent we have people speaking from each side. So please introduce yourself as a City Club member and then proceed.
Paul Barnum, Portland City Club member. First of all, I'd like to commend the committee for the thorough work that they have done on this report. It's really more than a study of Measure 64. It really amounts to a primer on forestry issues in Oregon. It's solid and well done. I would urge City Club members to oppose, however, the minority report for two reasons. Measure 64 is extreme and it's unnecessary. According to small woodland owners and foresters I have talked with, this measure really redefines the word clear cut. It prescribes a complex, one-size-fits-all approach to the number and volume of trees that must be left after harvest on every acre. The result, according to the state's own economic impact report, would be a 60 and 65 percent reduction in harvest respectively on west side and east side forests. And that's just in the first year. Private landowners believe that eventually the measure's complex requirements will result in economic loss and devaluation of forest land. Second of all, this measure is unnecessary. And by that, I mean that Oregon is already well-equipped to handle changes to forest rules. The current Forest Practices Act enacted in 1971 is dynamic and changeable. As the report shows, it has changed considerably with new science and perhaps no more so than in the past decade. I take pride in our Forest Practices Act and the many other laws that we have in Oregon, the Bottle Bill, the Beach Bill, Senate Bill 100, to name a few, that protect our quality of life. But I can't take pride in Measure 64. I urge members to work within existing processes to change what needs to be changed and oppose extreme and unnecessary measures.
Now, do I have anyone who's going to speak for the substitution of the minority report? All right, we'll go to speaking against the substitution of the minority report. So, speaking against ballot Measure 64.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charlie Hales, City Club member. I promise I won't make a weekly habit of this, having done it two weeks in a row now, but I did want to add one point to the discussion that although the committee did great work on the report and the report here today has been excellent, I think there's another reason for this vote by the City Club to be an important one. And that is, the timber industry is so important to the rest of the state of Oregon that this is really an opportunity for the City Club to demonstrate that the metropolitan area's community is not indifferent to the concerns and issues of the rest of the state. And I think that the message of a City Club, a strong City Club opposition to this ballot measure will be welcomed very warmly by the rest of the state. Thank you.
Now, do I hear any other comments or arguments? All right, do I hear a call for the question? Now, as I mentioned, the procedure this...oh, go ahead.
Nathan Sykes. I'm a City Club member. I feel like I have to say something because no one else is speaking out on the side of the environment. I feel that the notion of a clear cut is sort of offensive to me. I feel like people should look into their hearts and realize that this measure, the spirit of this measure, is to save the environment of Oregon. I haven't prepared any scientific backing for my speech here. In fact, I wasn't even prepared to speak, but I feel like somebody has to. I urge City Club members to put minority position. I seriously consider it. I think the City Club should be for this ban on clear cutting. And I'm basically speaking from my heart, just from driving around this beautiful state and seeing all the clear cuts. And I just want to make sure that that point of view is stated here. Thank you.
Thank you. We have speaking against?
Yes. My name is Josephine Pope, a member. And one thing that I think we need to think about is that we're not just thinking about It makes no sense to...well, first of all, the northwest is one of the fastest-growing areas for fiber, the best fiber and very fast-growing in the world. And it makes no sense to me to completely ban, which this would, the timber industry from Oregon where there are very, very, very stringent controls. What people in the world are not going to discontinue their use of timber. What they will do and have done is go to countries, areas like Siberia, Southeast Asia, where the governments are corrupt, the people are extremely poor, the environmental controls are next to none. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, do I hear another call for the question? All right, now, as I mentioned, the City Club procedure is that when we have a majority in a minority report, we first must vote on the issue of whether the minority report is going to be substituted for the majority report. So, now I'm going to ask for all of those who vote in favor of substituting the minority recommendation, that is, those are in favor of a yes vote on Measure 64, please raise your voting cards now. Thank you. All right, all of those who are opposed to the substitution of the minority report that are opposed to Measure 64, raise your cards now. All right, it appears that there's a clear majority that is opposing the substitution of the minority report. So we'll have the majority recommendation a part of the report. Now we need to do one more vote. All of those in favor of the report with the majority recommendation, that is, a no on Measure 64, please raise your cards now. Thank you. Now, all of you opposed to publication of the majority recommendation and adoption by the club, that is, people who are in favor of Measure 64, raise your cards now. Thank you very much for following me through that. It appears that the club has clearly voted to adopt the majority recommendation, that is, it will now be the club's position that you should vote no on ballot Measure 64. Now, I want to thank Jeanne and Ruth and the members of your committee for the fine report. We appreciate all your work. And remember that additional copies of this report may be obtained from the club office and, of course, all the reports from the City Club committees may be obtained off of the club's website. Now we can move to the City Council debate between Tanya Collier and Dan Salzman. This debate will have several sections. First, each candidate will have a three-minute opening statement, and we drew straws earlier in the month to decide who went first. Following the opening statements, the candidates will then respond to questions from our panel. Our questioners today are Andy Linehan of the City Club Board of Governors and Corinne Paulson of the Portland Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Questions were submitted in advance of this meeting by the City Club and by the league. The candidates, of course, have not seen the questions in advance, and the only questions that will be asked are those of the panel, no questions from the floor. Now, after the panel questions, each candidate will then have an opportunity to ask two questions of each other. And following the rotation of the candidate questions, we'll then have three-minute closing statements. The meeting is going to follow the program format I have talked about and the rules of conduct in our debates that are on your tables. And please hold all of your applause till the end of the program. To briefly introduce the candidates, Tanya Collier received a bachelor's degree in 1975 and a master's of public administration in 1979, both from Portland State University. She was on the Metro Council from 1986 until 92 and a Multnomah County Commissioner from 93 until 97. She has also worked as a labor relations representative for the Oregon Nurses Association. Dan Salzman received a bachelor's degree in environmental engineering in 1977 from Cornell and in 1980 received a master's in environmental engineering from MIT. In 1987, he formed his own consulting firm and has been working since then as an environmental consultant. Like Ms. Collier, he was a Multnomah County Commissioner from 1993 until 1997. Now I'll ask the candidates to approach their podiums and we'll begin with an opening statement from Mr. Salzman, followed by Ms. Collier.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Dan Salzman and I am a candidate for Portland City Council. And I want to thank all of you for being here today and I want to thank the City Club for hosting this debate. Last May, I offered Portland voters a vision of the city that I want to live in and to protect for the future. It's a vision of fighting juvenile crime by holding kids accountable the first time they cross the line. It's a vision of a city that stays engaged in its schools to make sure that they are adequately funded and that that funding gets into the classroom where it belongs. And it's a vision of maintaining Portland's livability in the face of tremendous growth through a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach to planning. And on May 19th, Portland voters clearly responded. Perhaps the greatest honor of my life, however, is that I am the single parent of an eight-year-old daughter named Adrienne. Being a single parent means a lot of different things. It means I spend a lot of time helping my daughter with homework, it means I spend a whole lot of time at Chuck E. Cheese. It also means that I know that Ginger Spice is, in fact, the one who left the Spice Girls. And it means that I've already survived every parent's worst nightmare, perhaps, and that's the pre-adolescent slumber party. But that's okay. I expected all of that when I first imagined becoming a father. I even looked forward to a lot of it. But it's what I didn't expect that has brought me here today as a candidate for City Council. I didn't expect that my daughter would go to a school where schools could be a dangerous place. I didn't expect that the age of eight, she would understand what a gang is and why you should be afraid of them. And I didn't expect that Oregon still would not have solved its school funding problems by the time my daughter enrolled in Portland Public Schools. As parents and as Portlanders, we've got some serious challenges in front of us. It will take all of us to overcome those challenges, our time, our energy, and our belief that we can make a difference. Having started and managed my own business, ten years now, I understand what it takes to take...I understand that it takes a hands-on style of leadership, the kind that says there's no time like the present to meet these challenges, and the time where it also means getting out from behind the desk, getting out in the community and seeing what needs to be done and saying, let's go to work. We've got a future to build for our kids. And that's why I'm here today and that's why I'm running for City Council. I also believe in leadership by example, and that's why I serve as a Meals on Wheels volunteer, feeding the elderly who can't feed themselves. It's why I serve on host community development, building, closing in on our 100th unit of affordable housing in north and northeast Portland. It's also why I've served on the Portland Community College Board for 10 years as a volunteer, where every student has a chance to secure a safe future. And it's why I work with abused children as well. Portland is truly a special place and I know everyone in this room has worked to make it so. If you will honor me with your support, I will do my best as your next city commissioner. Thank you.
Ms. Collier?
Thank you. This is one of the best times ever to be a Portlander. Our city is vibrant, our economy booms, crime rates are down, times are definitely as good as I ever remember them being. When things are good, it's a perfect time to make them better. So we have lots of challenges that we can work on. We worry about growth and traffic, housing that costs too much, and the schools that are not serving our kids. We worry that our opportunity for the good life might be slipping away. Opportunity, opportunity, that's what it is all about. Let me take just a minute and tell you why opportunity is the centerpiece of my campaign. When I was growing up, times were hard. My mom raised three girls all by herself. And we all worked hard and Portland responded, with teachers who cared, schools that gave us hope, neighbors who offered help and encouragement and babysitting, and with jobs. Portland gave me, like it gave many of the people here in this room, the chance to make something of ourselves. Thanks to that opportunity, I became the first in my family to graduate from high school. I was able to go on and earn a master's degree in public administration from Portland State University. Thanks to that opportunity, when I was a single mother, I was able to work and go to school and still keep my family together. Thanks to opportunity, I became the first woman in the United States with kids to be accepted into the United States Marine Corps. Remember when the phrase was, "We're looking for a few good men"? Emerging from those days of struggle, I've been determined to repay those who gave me so much. I want to make sure that Portland remains a city that rewards people who work hard. To do that, we have to set firm priorities. First and foremost, we must bring more jobs to Portland, good, living wage, jobs with benefits. We must make sure our schools are well-funded and that our neighborhoods are safe places. We must be sure that the family basics, housing, transportation, and clean water are affordable to everyone. And finally, we must come together as one community so your future is not determined by which side of the river that you grew up on. We have the tools to make this vision a reality. We have citizens who care and who are eager to participate. What I will bring is tenacity. I'm a fighter. I don't back down from a challenge, and I believe government is a catalyst. I've told you a little about my life as well as my goals because I think to understand where a person is going, you have to understand where they've been. My pledge to you is to keep Portland a city of hope, a city of opportunity, and a city of accomplishment. Thank you.
Now we'll hear questions from Andy Linehan and Corinne Paulson. The candidates will have 90 seconds to answer the questions and then 60 seconds for the opposing candidate to rebut. The first question will be asked of Mr. Salzman by Andy Linehan.
Portland may soon have two new urban renewal districts that are vastly different. City Council recently approved an urban renewal district for the Lentz area. In October 1998, City Council will consider an urban renewal district for the River District. What are your criteria for designating areas for urban renewal status?
I basically support the designation of urban renewal for both of those areas. However, I think there's clearly a stronger case to be made for urban renewal in the traditional sense of its meaning for the Lentz neighborhood, which truly is an area that can benefit from urban renewal. I think there is a legitimate controversy about whether the River District was really...whether the development needed to have the urban renewal to make the development happen. But that's a question I guess we can debate, and certainly the City Council, I guess, will have that debate. But I do believe it's appropriate to have both of those areas as an urban renewal area. And in fact, as a PCC board member, we are working very hard to make that Lentz urban renewal area a reality because we hope to have a facility there to serve the needs of southeast.
I'm very happy that we have urban renewal districts as a tool to use to help us preserve the urban growth boundary. I think that a number of people in our community talk about all of the urban renewal efforts in a very simplistic manner and that they can be used for a number of different projects that vary clear from the River District to Lentz. And it will help us to upgrade our community, both of these projects, and to meet the goals that we've set down with the Region 2040. So it's a very important tool and I will be delighted to see a healthy split between the downtown area and the neighborhoods when we go forward and use this tool in the future.
Question of Ms. Collier.
Voters in November will be confronted with a number of property tax measures for such things as convention center expansion, South-North Light Rail, parks, and the like. If all these measures pass, property taxes will increase substantially, which could set off a whole new tax limitation movement. Should government do a better job setting funding priorities or should they ask for everything and risk the consequences?
Yeah, it's a very good question. There are a number of issues on the ballot, and that comes out of our last go-around of tax limitations where it was decided that it would be better if all of the items that people were to vote on went on the ballot at the same time so that you could see exactly what it was going to cost. So our citizens are going to have the opportunity to choose between and among all of those ballot measures. And I think that that is important. They can prioritize which services they would like to fund. But I would like to see better cooperation among governments and particularly on the regional level to sit down and talk about what the priorities in our city and in our regions are and to talk about what the timing of those are when they go on the ballot so that we don't get huge bills and that we don't risk more property tax limitation measures.
You left out one measure and that's Portland Community College, $135 million bond measure, which I support. I think, you know, what we have here is clearly what was intended by Measure 47. Measure 47 passed and basically it said that governments, if you want money from us, from the taxpayers, you've got to, if you don't want to have that 50% turnout governing whether your measure passes or fails, you've got to put it on the November general election. And in a way, I think that's a healthy approach because it does give voters the opportunity to see the whole picture and to make their decisions accordingly. Speaking from somebody who's been in government and been in the Community College, I know we had a lot of jitteriness about putting everything on the ballot in November. There was sort of, I think, a sort of a lemming instinct that we all had to rush to November. But, you know, truly, that is what was intended by Measure 47, and I think it does give voters that opportunity to see the whole picture and make their choices accordingly.
Now, question of Mr. Salzman.
There's been a lot of debate on the effects of Portland's growth. What are your views on the positive and negative changes that have occurred in the city as a result of growth?
Well, I think that, you know, what it is we all like about living here is one of the biggest challenges we face. This area is growing, whether it's people moving here or whether it's our kids and grandkids deciding they want to live here or, like myself, go spend some time on the East Coast, working for Senator Wyden and then coming back to Portland because this is where I want to be. So I think that there's been a lot of positive things. I think we have finally achieved a regional consensus that we have to tackle growth as a region. I've worked with Metro to formulate the 2040 growth plan, but that really is only a plan. Now it falls to each city in this region to make those tough decisions about where new housing is going to go, where new jobs are going to be. If we're serious about an urban growth boundary, a line that we live and work on one side and we play and have farm and forest lands on that other side. If we're serious about that concept, and I think we are, then we've got tough decisions to make.
Meeting the density goals that the Region 2040 has set before us is going to take very strong and very sensitive leadership. And I believe that we've seen that as we've witnessed some of the neighborhoods going through the process of dealing with density. I think part of what we need to do is to educate our citizens that all this density is not going to end up smack dab in the middle of their neighborhoods. But we have a plan for density to go along busy streets like Belmont with Belmont Dairy on the bottom and housing on the top and along transit ways. The key to making density work, however, is going to be to have citizens participate and work on what it looks like in their neighborhood so that our neighborhoods are not wrecked. And we will have to bring our citizens along and let our citizens participate in the next years while we handle the density issue.
Question of Ms. Collier.
Some observers of the current City Council see individuals with similar philosophical beliefs engaged in political disputes. As a new member of City Council, what would you add to the current mix that would improve working relationships and ease tensions?
That is a really great question. It is very important when you're on a governing body to work closely with the other members of the governing body. And I look forward to doing that with the current City Council members and I'm proud to say that I have a good relationship with all five of them. What I want to accomplish on City Council goes along with helping and complementing the other City Council members. First of all, to make sure that our schools are strong. Secondly, I would like to take on the issue of job growth and three years from now would like to be standing up here in front of you saying, "We have created 10,000 more jobs in the city of Portland." I also want to say that I am from the east side of the river and I have a goal when I'm on City Council to work with the other councilors to make our city one city. And I want to help us face these growth issues that we've been talking about with grace. So I have a number of goals when I get on City Council that are very complimentary to the people who are there now and that I very much look forward to working with them
I also have very good working relationships with, I believe, the City Councilors, all the City Councilors and the mayor. And I think there's a real high premium on cooperation these days because we have so many vexing problems that we really have to, if we're going to solve these problems and not just debate them forever, we've got to make tough decisions. As a county commissioner, I would note that with Gretchen Gaffory leaving the city commission, there will no longer be a city commissioner that has served as a county commissioner. And I think that that's a valuable perspective to bring to that seat. And I intend to bring that to the seat to make the city and the county work closer together on human issues too, not just physical infrastructure issues. And finally, what I think, where I really believe I complement the team is the fact that I do have a private sector background. I am an environmental engineer and I think that's a set of skills that are not presently represented on the council and could be very helpful solving many of the environmental challenges that we face.
Question of Mr. Salzman.
While Portland and Multnomah County have given money to school districts for several years, both governments say this is one-time assistance. What do you see as the city's role with regard to schools?
Does that mean...
Yes.
Yes. I believe that there probably is going to be an ongoing role for the city of Portland in funding school districts in the city. And I think the challenge is, is how do we do that in a smart manner and how do we do that in a way that is accountable to voters and to taxpayers? I do think that while Salem is certainly the first source of salvation, I also believe, I'm getting kind of tired of running down there every two years and we do a record job on appropriation budget, but then we come up empty-handed or we still come up short. So I believe that we, and we means the county, the city, and the school districts, need to work closely together to take more of our destiny into our own hands. Certainly Salem's going to be, as long as Measure 5 is in place, it's going to be the major source of school funding. But there are ways we can bust down turf walls, bust down barriers, to deliver services amongst ourselves and save money and use that money to keep teachers in the classrooms and kids.
I believe that there's both a short-term role of the city of Portland to play in schools and a long-term role. The short-term role is that we do have to hold the schools accountable for high standards and we do have to make sure that we contribute financially to the schools until we, as a community, can all go down to the legislature and make sure that the legislature picks up its constitutional mandate to fund the schools. And I believe that is our challenge as a community, as well as elected officials and as well as school advocates. The long-range role for the city of Portland is complimentary with, from the dinner bell, from the school bell to the dinner bell in that we have, can participate in after-school programs for kids. And we also, at the city, have a role to do some work on combining school-to-work programs so that our kids will know what opportunities are out there when the time comes for them to go to work.
Question of Ms. Collier.
Light rail advocates believe that this is the preferred public transportation solution today, yet some new studies cast doubt on light rail's real contribution to reducing congestion. If you had $1 billion to spend on transportation, would you spend it on one light rail line, 20 street car lines, a new freeway, or something else?
Thank you very much. I am a big supporter of light rail. Let me start with that. I've had the privilege of serving on Metro Joint Policy Committee, J-PAC Committee, to make transportation decisions over the course of the last five years. Strong supporter of North-South, strong supporter of the leg to the airport, and looking forward to working with Charlie on those issues. However, if I had additional money, and this is what comes after light rail, I want to work on what I call the post-light rail transportation issues. Those being, we have to be able to have crosstown buses, we have to be able to have more opportunities to get around in between and among our communities, streetcars, trolleys, river taxis. We have all sorts of opportunities in this community to put good transportation and systems in place that people can take advantage of and that does what it's supposed to do, which is to get you from here to there, save our clean air, make our air better, and also combine transportation along with land use planning... combine transportation along with land use planning, so that we can meet the Regional 2040 goals.
Well, if I had that billion dollars, I'd probably want to see it spent on, well, I know I'd want to see it spent on light rail, certainly the streetcar lines too, and also capacity management of our existing roadways. So I guess I'm sort of copying out by saying "all of the above." But let me respond to the point you mentioned about statistics about whether light rail is truly effective, or whether it's only shifting people from buses into light rail. I think there's a lot of legitimate issues that have been raised, and I don't doubt the integrity of the people that have raised those issues. But to me, light rail comes down to a basic gut-level instinct. Is this the type of solid infrastructure development that we need to really keep this region livable? And I believe that is yes. Like I said, we can mire ourselves in statistics until the end of the millennium if we wish. But I also believe we need to act prudently today if we're going to keep ahead of the growth curve.
Question of Mr. Salzman.
New urban development must pay systems development charges for sewer, water, roads, and parks. Many developers argue that this just drives up the cost of housing. Others think that it's only fair that new development help pay for itself. How should growth-related costs be paid for without making new homes unaffordable?
System development charges, I think, are a legitimate tool to make growth pay its way. I do think, however, that there has to be sort of a, somebody looking back and saying, "What is the cumulative impact on property owners and on potential new home buyers?" I do think that one thing that maybe has been going on the city too much is not, you know, each bureau sort of promoting its own system development charge, and then we have the whole issue of whether schools can have system development charges too. We have to be mindful of what the cumulative impact is, but I do think system development charges are a way for growth to pay its own way.
We've made a commitment in our community that we are going to have an urban growth boundary, that we're not going to grow by way of sprawl, and that we're going to plan carefully, and we're going to implement carefully, and that we're going to have all spectrum of people in our community participating in this. That is not to say that these decisions are going to be easy, and certainly not that they're going to be free or cheap. System development charges are very much a part of what is going to have to happen in order to pay for our growth. We will need, however, to put in a balance of ways to pay for growth, because we don't want the burden to fall on any one segment of our population as we move through the next 10 years while we actually make the density that we're planning on happen.
Question of Ms. Collier.
Portland's downtown core area is losing jobs to the suburbs. Some blame Portland's higher taxes, lack of parking, and high rent. What would you propose to help strengthen Portland's ability to attract and keep jobs?
Thank you. Jobs are my number-one issue, and the issue that I want to work on when I go to City Council. We are projected to need 70,000 jobs in the core area over the course of the next 10 years, and we really don't have an active plan in place to do that. We do have prosperous Portland, which has a number of strategies in it that will help us get the job development that we know here. And I would like very much to take that off of the shelf and be able to work on those strategies. One strategy is that of the business income tax. And it says that if we're going to have jobs here and not drive our jobs to the suburbs, that we have to be very careful about our taxing situation, so that they don't have advantages by going to Washington County and Clackamas County. I would like to see the business income tax frozen over a period of time and eased up, with the revenues being made up for out of regular business taxes that we could absolutely take care of, as long as we continue with a modest growth in the economy.
It's very important to this region as a whole that downtown has a large share of job growth. And you're right, a lot of new jobs have not been going to downtown, they've been going to the Cruzway area. And I won't deny that the combined impact of the city business license fee and the county's business income tax are a factor, I think, in many of those decisions made by potential. But we have to work hard as a city to make sure that we keep jobs downtown, because we have spent billions of dollars on infrastructure, transit systems, roads, bridges, that are all premised on the notion of a central city area. I mean, that's part of the reason why we need better north-south transit, but like it or not, that's how our system is configured right now, and we need to make sure that we are using those assets wisely, so we need more people in downtown. I have committed to work to try to get the combined impact of the business income tax and the city business license fee down below 2%. I think that's a number that people have told me, who know better than I do, that that removes it as a sort of a locational factor in where business locates.
Question of Mr. Salzman.
With a new council member coming on board, the mayor could substantially reorganize bureau assignments. What are you going to ask for and why?
I am, I'm going to ask for the Environmental Services Bureau. And why is, and it's certainly not a reflection on Commissioner Sten, who was here today. He's doing a great job. But it is a reflection, as I stated earlier, where I feel that my skills and professional background would best contribute to the City Council team, and it's also where I see many of the environmental issues, quality-of-life issues, that I want to work on. Things like reducing stormwater runoff by using natural landscapes, bringing back roof gardens and things like that. Those are all very challenging issues, and getting our combined sewage overflow done on time and on budget, so we can stop dumping raw sewage into the Willamette. So the Environmental Services Bureau is my first choice. I really don't have a second choice. I'll take whatever the mayor gives me and do a good job at it.
This is always a hard question to answer, because somebody's body is in those bureaus right now. So Charlie, close your ears. I'm very interested in doing planning and transportation. I also believe in the waiting-in-line method of doing that, so I don't, not going to try to bump Charlie out of it for, at all. And I am looking forward to working with him in the next years over things that we've worked together on the past, which are land use and which are transportation. The other bureau that I really want is the Office of Neighborhood Associations. I think that if you're going to talk about wanting land use, handling density, and growing with grace, that the one piece that we have left out and need to include with those bureaus is that of citizen participation. And I will look forward to working with the neighborhood associations on some of these goals, even though I know that that's not a particularly easy thing to do sometimes.
Question of Ms. Collier.
Why should voters vote for you this November instead of your opponent?
The differences between Dan and I are more than may appear to the eye, and I think they can best be explained probably by a couple of examples. My first example is when we went to renovate the downtown library. We passed a bond measure in order to do that, if you remember, a couple of years ago. And the differences are that Dan put a coffee shop in the downtown library. What I did was make sure that the bond proceeds could go for moving the library, and that way the building could be renovated in an empty building. In the course of doing that, we saved over $5 million in two years. In fact, your library wouldn't be open today if that wouldn't have happened. The second is with the strategic investment program. We both voted the same on the strategic investment program, but I felt so strongly that those 2,500 jobs went to people on welfare, and people who are unemployed and underemployed, that I personally negotiated the contracts, and then I went on even further to sit on the steering committee for a year to make sure it got implemented the way that it was supposed to be implemented. I love a challenge. I love working on complex problems, and I see the big picture. Additionally, I'm very inclusive in my work and make sure that everybody is sitting down at the table to help craft the good policies that the City Council will pass.
I think one of the, one of the clear differences is, is having a background in the private sector. I think that has helped serve me well as a county commissioner and as a PCC board member. I think it's made me a better public policymaker, because I am more sensitive to the impacts of decisions we make on, on citizens and on businesses. So I think that's, that's one important difference. Secondly, I'm glad Tanya brought up the library, because I'm very proud of the fact that illustrates my ability to think out of the box. When I got elected to the county commission, the first thing I did was to create the Library Entrepreneurial Initiatives Team. Private sector individuals that looked at the library and says, "How can we generate non-tax dollars to support the library without violating core values like charging for a library card? We're never going to do that." They came up with some bang-up ideas. Three of them have been implemented so far. As Tanya mentioned, we have a Starbucks now, and that's producing money for the library. We have a gift shop that produces, again, money for the library. We have a business services desk, where you can call up and have research done for a fee by people who are librarians who are good at doing that research. I'm very proud of that different type of approach of financing government.
Question of Mr. Salzman.
What role will the neighborhood associations have in your decision-making?
I, neighborhood, neighborhood associations always have a role in decision-making. I am somebody who is very accessible. There's no elaborate triage system one has to get through to get me on the phone, and I've never turned down a request for a meeting in all my years in public office. So, yeah, and I spend a lot of time just going out to neighborhood associations and just listening sometimes, not even saying anything, because I think it's important to just know what's going on. So yes, they have a role to play, but I'm also going to say that not all neighborhood associations are necessarily reflective of the views of their neighbors. And that has to also be taken into account these days.
One of the things I'm proudest of in my service as a county commissioner is that I was able to work with my neighborhood associations and affect great change in outer southeast Portland. And I found in working with them that it's very important that ideas come from the neighborhood associations as being, and I'll include the whole community in that, instead of the top-down. And that we have to have a partnership with our citizens as we tackle problems, as we solve problems, and as we just go through the dialogue of talking about what needs to be done in this community. We are very fortunate in our community to have an active community who wants to participate in good, strong neighborhood associations.
Now we'll have a final question of the panel of Ms. Collier.
What is your opinion of the mayor's proposal to cover the I-405 freeway?
I'm going to be in trouble with the whole City Council by the time I get done with your questions. I like the ideas, the mayor's idea of covering I-405. Unfortunately, I am a very practical person, and I've been working on transportation policies in our community for the last five years. And I know that we have so many transportation needs that will have to come before covering I-405. For one thing, we haven't had an increase in our gas tax in the last six years, which means that we're falling behind in such mundane things as road repair and bridge repair. More than that, we're trying to build a light rail system and get that in place, so that we then can do post-light rail planning, and we can bring more modes of transportation here. So the bridges alone, let me mention, have a $250 million liability over the next 20 years in order to make them safe and strong, and be able to serve less, east to west, and be able to get our goods and services to market. With all these things facing us, I'm afraid that we just can't do the 405 bridge right now.
I confess, I'm a dreamer, like Mayor Katz, and I think it's an idea whose time has come. I will confess, I do not know the cost associated with it, but I can tell you certainly from my own professional background, there's nothing that's technologically undoable about it. It's very doable, and in fact, many other cities in this country have exactly the same thing that Mayor Katz has proposed. And I think it's important to bear in mind why, one of the reasons she proposed that, is to deal with the very tough decisions we're going to have to make. Again, if we're serious about an urban growth boundary, we're going to have to make, affect the right trade-offs between new neighborhoods, like the River District, like I-405 could be, versus infilling in existing neighborhoods, versus higher residential densities on transit corridors. So I think it's, it's another tool to give us the city to work with. And I also think that private development rights can be brought into bear and make this project a good public-private demonstration project.
Now during this next portion of the debate, each of the candidates will ask two questions of the other candidate. They will have 30 seconds to ask the question, one minute to respond, and an optional 30 seconds to rebut if they would like. First question will be asked by Mr. Salzman of Ms. Collier.
Last year, you voted to spend $15,000 to send library employees to a weekend conference in Eugene, and opposed my efforts to use that money for library branches we feared we would be forced to close. Two years ago, you spent $9,000 taxpayer dollars to send yourself to Harvard for two weeks. Just this year, you voted to create 10 new positions, including a public relations position to oversee the Hawthorne Bridge closure, after the county had already contracted out the entire project. How do you justify these use of taxpayer dollars at a time when public trust and government is so low?
This is a basic difference between Dan and I. I am not a micromanager. I'll start with the bridge question. We're fixing the Hawthorne Bridge to the tune of $21.5 million. To think that we wouldn't have to hire additional county staff to oversee that project is simply foolish. On the issue of the library, that's very interesting. The year that Jenny Cooper, our Director of Libraries, was the National Chair of the Library Association, Dan voted to obliterate her travel and training budget. And last and not least, Harvard. I'm very proud to say that I was selected to go to Harvard in one of the personal development and training sessions for leaders. People from all over the United States of America came. And I think if you're going to be in charge of a $1.25 billion budget, that you need to do some things like that to keep yourself on top of it. Dan?
My rebuttal would simply be that the $15,000 that was being spent to spend librarians to Eugene, first of all, I have a hard time picturing how you spend that much money to go to Eugene. But secondly, it was to take money, and we were, in the same breath, we were telling you we were going to close library branches. That may be called micromanaging, and in my faith, we call it chutzpah. Secondly, on the 10 new positions, do you really believe that? The job is being contracted out, we already have a bridge department. Why do we have to bring 10 new people, including a public relations specialist? What more can you say, except the bridge is closed, come back in a year? I never got a straight answer from anybody, and that's why I voted against it.
Ms. Collier, your question of Mr. Salzman.
Thank you very much. Four years ago, a park bond passed that made money available to build two community centers. They ended up being sited at the Floyd Light School on the east side and Gabriel Park on the west side. One center was in your Multnomah County District, and one was in mine. Both centers were fraught with difficulty. What did you do as a leader in the Southwest community to provide help resolving the issues with the Gabriel Park Center?
Basically, my role in the siding of the Gabriel Park Center, or what's now the Gabriel Park Center, was I was basically supporting the task force that Commissioner Hill set up to look at different locations. One of those locations was not the Gabriel Park, it was, in fact, sort of the Wilson High School campus. And one of the things I explored with our library people was the possibility of the library relocating its Hillsdale branch into a new community center, so that we could be a tenant, help pay the operating cost. The Southwest community, the Gabriel Park site, needless to say, was a lot of controversy, as was the whole Floyd Light Center. These things are never easy to do. I certainly, I'm glad the City Council's imposed a moratorium, though, on using any further park space for memorials or for whatever, because I think it's a very serious question. As this region grows, we have to worry more about keeping our precious open space, keeping our precious parks. They mean more and more as we become a more dense environment.
This is another very big difference between Dan and I. Last night, we were at the Floyd Light Center, and we were at a candidate's fair there. I helped my neighborhoods in, in the mid-county area to work through the difficulties, so that that center could be opened and running. And it is opened and running right now, while the Southwest Center, that had no leadership from their county commissioner, is still closed, is still not open, and is still in cords. And I believe that this is one of the reasons why I received the endorsement of the Southwest Connection.
Mr. Salzman, your question of Ms. Collier.
No rebuttal.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I did that last time.
I just wanted to say that I don't think it was, it was a failure of my leadership that the Southwest, or that the Southwest Community Center hasn't been achieved yet, but it is under construction. And if you've been out there, you would know that. And also, it is something that is basically a long, contentious process, and I felt that I did my best as a county commissioner, but it was ultimately a city decision.
Okay, your question.
Recently, we were at the Columbia Corridor Business Association, where you said you would work to end the county business income tax. Now, I'm not a big fan of the BIT, but while we were on the county commission, we both voted for a temporary increase in it. To the best of my knowledge, you've never voted against an increase in the BIT, or introduced a proposal to eliminate it. So first, how will you work as a city commissioner to eliminate this county tax? And second, how do you do, how do you intend to do so responsibly, given that the BIT is the county's second-largest general revenue source?
The business income tax is very important to what we're doing right now, but I don't believe that that's the reason, any, gives us any reason at all not to explore alternatives to it. And I very much intend to explore elimination of the business income tax. Now, I understand that we can't do without those revenues, so what we will have to do is work as a body with the city, with the county, and in the state legislature. as a body with the city, with the county, and in the state legislature to propose freezing that tax, and then developing a way to replace it with regular business income taxes. That's what my plan is. I've talked about proposing that in order to stimulate job growth that we need to have right here in the city of Portland, and I plan on following through with it.
I guess I, I'm lost in the explanation of how that would work. It sounds like you're taking one business income tax and replacing it with another one, but I think the point remains valid. Five years, you were at the county commission. I worked to consolidate with Commissioner Hales the administration of the business income tax, to bring down the cost of government, and we even shaved off a tenth of a point of the business income tax. So I think I've got a record of trying to make this thing more equitable, and I find it, you know, why, how can you possibly say you can eliminate it when you couldn't do it at the county, and now you're moving to the city?
Now, your final question of Mr. Salzman.
Thank you. In August and September, the Oregonian wrote editorials calling on candidates to pledge to forego negative campaigning. I believe that reform belongs, begins at home. I am pledging today that my campaign will engage in no negative campaigning, no negative brochures, no negative TV ads, and no negative comparison pieces. Dan, will you join me in making that pledge?
Yes, that's quite a relief, actually. It's a relief to hear that. I too believe that negative campaigning is not what Oregonians and Portlanders want to see. They want to see two well-qualified candidates, and they want to know what makes us different, what makes us tick, and why we both think we're, we would be the best person for the job. So certainly, I will be, in my mail and in my other forms of campaigning, you will be hearing me talk about why I believe I'm the best person, and I will be illustrating, I think, differences that are on the record where we are different in our philosophies.
This is great, I think, to have two major candidates standing up here and saying this, because negative campaigning alienates the voters. The Oregon Alliance for Better Campaigns, the City Club, and League of Women voters have called for an end for all candidates to start doing that, and I believe that if we start right here with Dan and I, that we have made very good progress in doing that. Now, you have all heard us make this pledge, so I will issue the challenge to you to watch over the next 30 days and hold both of us to these promises. Thank you very much.
I know that's applause for both candidates. Now, we're going to enter the last part of the debate. Each party will have a three-minute closing statement, beginning with Mr. Salzman.
Again, I'd like to thank the City Club and all of you for being here today, your time and attention to this race for city council. I began this lunch talking about my daughter Adrienne, and I'd like to close telling you about another generation of my family, another bit about the Salzman family, and that's my grandparents, Sam and Anna. They immigrated here from Russia in the early 1900s. I vividly recall the stories my grandmother told me of hiding from Cossacks when they were out murdering Jews. Believe me, they had nothing when they came to this country but hope and determination. My grandfather sold scrap metal and chickens out of the back of his Model T pickup Ford to get by, and they instilled, they worked hard, and ultimately, they lived the American dream with a home and a happy family, and a healthy family, and the ability to give back to the community. And they've instilled that instinct, not only in me, but in my father. My father sold the Oregonian newspaper when he was 10 years old to raise money so he could attend college, and he's emphasized in all of us the hard work and responsibility, and also the notion of giving, giving back. I want a Portland where every child can share the opportunity my grandparents had and can learn those values, and that's why, as a Multnomah County Commissioner, I focused a lot of my efforts on children, teaching young people accountability the first time they get in trouble, working to reduce gun violence and gang violence, and working hard to reduce teen pregnancy and keep kids into school, and to make sure those schools were places where children could learn. And it's why I never have and never will give up the fight against child abuse and domestic violence, and it's why I've worked hard to make sure that Portland remains the beautiful, livable city that we love, and keep it that way well into the next century. If I'm elected to the city council, I'll get out from behind my desk and find out what we need to do to keep our kids out of a life of crime and to keep guns out of the hands of children. I'll make sure that the money we're investing in our schools is reaching the classroom, and I'll also make sure that we're looking at every tax dollar we spend to ask if it is being spent efficiently and effectively. I think that is a big concern of a lot of us these days, and I'll do my best, finally, to lead by example. I believe that my background as a community volunteer, a businessperson, a PCC board member, Multnomah County Commissioner, and a dad, offers the best blend of experience and values the Portland City Council, for the Portland City Council, and I can promise you this, that nobody will work harder. I would be honored to have your support on November 3rd. Those of you who vote sooner by absentee ballot, I would be honored to have your support soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I ended my opening remarks with, my pledge is to keep Portland a city of hope and opportunity and accomplishment. And I want to introduce you to some people that tell you exactly, or show you exactly why it is that I'm running for Portland City Council, and what it is that I want to do when I get to Portland City Council. First of all, I want to introduce you to Nikki Williams and her daughter, Abrianna. Nikki is a social worker, and was worked very hard her whole life, but didn't make enough money where she was going to be able to own her own home, so we went to work with Habitat for Humanity. And what we did with Nikki's sweat equity and working on all those programs is we then did a women's build, and we worked to raise the money so that Nikki's house could be built, and Nikki and Abrianna are in it right now, and she has decorated it and is a beautiful place, and that is opportunity. I'd also like to introduce you to Dick and Opal Hazeltime. They've lived in the Brentwood-Darlington neighborhood for 50 years, and they've watched that neighborhood change. We built the first community center since the 1920s in Brentwood-Darlington, and Opal is a volunteer at the community safety, the community policing station, and that then spawned the Marshall Carrying Community, which is the best caring community in the whole city of Portland. The Brentwood-Darlington neighborhood, as a consequence of leadership and working with the community, is absolutely turned around. Crime is down 50%. Let's do what it is that works. Great schools. You know, not everybody can go to public schools. I want to introduce you to Linda Zinkanian and her two students, Cecilia Berninghausen and Travis Prater. They weren't able to make it in Portland, in Portland Public Schools for a number of reasons, not of their own doing, and so they went to Mount Scott Alternative School. I gave, when I was a county commissioner, $1,000 out of my budget to get the school started, and now these two young people are going to start high school at Franklin High School and at Marshall High School, and they're back in the mainstream, the stream again. And I've told you, my number-one thing when I get to city council is jobs, and I want to introduce you to Kathy Matney. Kathy Matney is an employee of LSI Logic. She started out not being able to support her family because she didn't have job skills, and when we negotiated that contract, Kathy is one of the people who got those jobs. These are the things that I would like to do and what I would like to bring to city council. I do believe that we're a city of hope, and I do believe that we will be a city of accomplishment, and I would sure appreciate your vote and your support on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
I want to thank both candidates for this debate. And I, I think everyone joins me in your pledge, appreciating your pledge to make this a very positive campaign, and we thank you for that. We're very fortunate to have two so qualified candidates. Now, make sure to join us next week at the Hilton Hotel, where we're going to hear the ballot measure report on Measure 61, which has increased sentences for property crimes, and the debate between Molly Bordinaro and David Wu. Again, that's at the Hilton. Thank you very much for coming today.
Good job. Good job. Appreciate you coming. Good, good job.